Is that better? There we go. And so, we're going to get started in a minute or two. I just want to welcome you all on behalf of the League of Women Voters in the city of Fullerton. For those of you who have just arrived, there are note cards available for you to ask questions of the candidates. And so, where are our note card givers? People there? So if you need a note card during the evening, earlier is better than later to get the questions in because we will have a limited amount of time to ask questions. So get it down and get it to us. And then our greeters will pick them up and deliver them for you. So, let's get started. My name is Jody Balma and I'm a professor of political science at Fullerton College. And thrilled to see so many people here for a candidate's forum. We're also live on our public TV and the candidate's forum will be available on the website to link to and view later. So, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. And our goal for tonight is to allow each candidate to communicate their platform and vision for representing the Fullerton City Council and allow the audience to ask questions, all while maintaining civil discourse. It's not a debate and you won't see the candidates interacting with one another but simply answering the questions. Before the event, we drew slots of where the candidates would sit and will ask questions in that order. Since district elections are new, I just want to take a minute to talk about that change. We do have some maps available if you're not sure where you live. But Fullerton has been divided in the past. We elected all five city council members by at-large elections and now we have a map of five geographical areas and two of those districts. District three, and if the three candidates for district three would raise their hand, and district five. And the three candidates who are here raise their hand from district five. So, there are only two districts on the ballot this time. If you live in districts one, two, or four, you get to vote in 2020 for your representatives. What else did I want to say about that? Oh, however, once elected, the council obviously represents the entire city. So, we do want to make sure candidate's forums are available for everyone and that's why we're having the candidates together. But if we did divide them in seating so that you can compare the answers of the three candidates from district three and the three candidates from district five. So, we're going to get started with an opening statement. Each candidate has two minutes to talk about themselves and then I'll ask questions from the audience where the candidates have one minute. Then we'll end that about 7:10 and we'll have their closing argument, not closing arguments, but closing statements for a minute each. So, Jesus, if you want to get started with your opening statement.
Can someone just warn me of the timer?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we have timekeepers. I forgot to introduce our timekeepers. And so, they're keeping track. You do not have to. So, at one minute during your opening statement, they will have that card up and they will leave it up because we are not expecting you to speak to our timekeepers. So, you want to keep that available. And then at 30 seconds, the next card will go up and then stop. And so, if you don't see the stop sign, I will alert you to it. Please feel free to finish your thought. And by that, I mean a sentence, not a paragraph. But then we'll move on. So, thank you. Thank you very much. Jesus.
All right. Well, first of all, thank you, members of the audience, for showing up tonight. I want to applaud you for taking the time out and being civically engaged. And that's one thing I share with my students. I've been a teacher for going on 21 years at the local Dinkles Junior High. And every now and then, this comes up about issues going on. And I say, well, you got to vote. You have to vote. You got to get engaged. So, thank you all for showing up here and thank you to the audiences watching out there. So again, my name is Casu Silva and I am the proud son of two immigrant parents from Mexico. My dad was up here when he was a teenager, being a strong-armed well, but I said, oh, picking fruit and cotton all over the states. And he made a comment one time that he was up in Minnesota when he was young and somebody was telling about this little stream of river that opened up into a big river. And I go, Dad, you were at the Mississippi. Whoa. But it was his seeing what was available in the U.S. that gave him the chance to bring us up. And it's that hard work that he has been done and continues to do that has allowed me to grow up, a small kid, no English, being a, coming into school and living the American dream. And standing up here today, I could have never imagined where I, my first day here in the U.S. and then being up here now. But it's been, it's been the American dream. And I've got 30 seconds. So, a couple of things I want to emphasize is that when I ran, a couple of things I said that I would try to secure funding for the Fox, look to work and save the hunt and look to fulfill the will of the residents when they voted 62% to save Coyote Hills. So, I've done that. I was the only member initially to allow to vote to take the $15 million for SB 714. And thank goodness that we finally did get it, but I was the only one that voted in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas.
All right. Hello. Can you hear me out there? Hello and thank you for having me this evening. My name is Nicholas Wildstar and I'm running to represent district three. I've been a resident of Fullerton for over five years now. My wife and I, we've lived in Fullerton or since four, about five years, but we've been married for almost seven years. So, we spent the majority of our time as a married couple, living here in Fullerton. We definitely like living here in the city. We would love to continue to call the city home, but like most of the residents, we would just like to see the city be a bit better. If my name sounds familiar to any of you, that may be because of one of a few reasons. I did run for governor of California. I was the Libertarian candidate for California Governor on the June ballot. And since I didn't make it, I still would like to have an opportunity to represent the people of my community, which is why I'm running for city council. I've also been a community activist for the past decade and have been involved in protests and rallies through multiple cities throughout the state. And if you're a fan of hip-hop, I'm also a recording artist. I'm originally from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and have lived in California for nearly 20 years now. And I moved out here to pursue my dreams in music and have accomplished quite much. And my goal is just to be a voice for the people of the streets, the people of the neighborhoods, the people that don't have their voices heard. So, I would like to have an opportunity to represent the disenfranchised, the homeless, the small businesses that are struggling. So, I hope that you will consider supporting me and voting Wildstar for city council in November. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to the folks that have joined us here in person and those watching at home. And thank you to League of Women Voters for presenting this forum. My name is Greg Seaborn. I am a third-generation Fullertonian and I have lived here for more than 40 years. Fullerton is where my wife and I chose to raise our three children. I want to make sure the great quality of life that I enjoyed growing up is preserved and enhanced for our children and for generations to come. That's why I'm running for reelection. And with your help, we'll make Fullerton even better. It has been a privilege to serve this year as your mayor pro tem and as your mayor in 2015 and on this council since 2012. Serving on the council, I have opposed tax bonds that create more debt. I oppose record-high water rates and an illegal 10% water tax. I support refunding ratepayers $7 million. I also oppose the 7% of water revenues going to backfill unsustainable public pensions. I oppose the closure of the sale of the Hunt Branch Library. As Fullerton's representative on the, on and the chairman of the Orange County Sanitation District, I've helped align regional funding with environmental goals along with Fullerton's needs. Through our close partnership with the OC Sanitation District, I was able to align scheduling costs, scheduling and cost to maximize return on your investment, which led to the repaving of a portion of Yorgalinda Boulevard and State College Boulevard from Yorgalinda to the city's southern limits. We have infrastructure issues we need to tackle with multiple road, water, and sewer projects to be completed. It is also my opinion that we should oppose a Fullerton College stadium project. Two stadiums within a few hundred feet are frankly too many. To get these things done, I need your vote. Please vote for me, Greg Seaborn, for Fullerton City Council, District Three. Thank you.
My name is Ahmad Zahra. I'm running for district five. Thank you for the League of Women Voters and for everybody here for coming out. I'm an immigrant. Been here 22 years. I came from Syria. My spouse is Mexican. We are a bicultural Latino-Arab-American family living in Fulton, which is becoming more and more diverse and you see that in South Fulton specifically. I originally studied medicine. I practiced for about three years. I did pathology and neuropathology. I was pretty young when I graduated. I was 23 when I got my M.D. When I came to the United States, I decided to pursue my own dreams of making movies and I started from scratch, waited tables, night classes, slept in my car even, and worked hard on myself. And after 20 years, I have a business in film. I do educational media documentaries. I've raised $50,000 for Cal State Fulton students in the film departments and grants some financing. I brought one of my productions and hired student actors from Fulton College, give them opportunities. And last year, I started my own charity called Ahmad School Drive, providing school supplies to South Fulton schools. My big passion is child poverty and we, it is rising in our town. We see it every day. I'm running because I made a promise to the little girls that were digging in my dumpsters for plastic bottles. And this is a, they are homeless. We have about 170 homeless kids in our school district right now with half our kids under poverty line. This is due to the economic situation in South Fulton that I'd like to improve through good business development, economic development, and lowering fees on community centers, after-school programs, and providing good housing that is affordable for every level of income. That is why I'm running and thank you very much.
My name is Dr. Vicky Calhoun. I am a Fullertonian. I've been here all of my life and I went to school here from Maple School, Laguna Road, Lider Vista, Fordham High School, Fullerton College, Sandy Hill State, Loyola Nerriman, and then I got my doctor. I want to thank the Women, League of Women Voters for their time and all of you and everybody out there watching. A little bit about me, I have been here all my life, most of my life. I love Fullerton. I attended the schools and Fullerton College, Go Hornets. Then I received my, I received my degrees. I'm a candidate for district five, city council, which is on south of Commonwealth from, from Euclid to 57. My goal for district five is to make it number one. For many years, our residents in the part, south side of Fullerton have lacked a voice. And since I've been there for about 50 years, I want to be that voice. I promise to listen and speak on district five behalf. I've been out there. I've been canvassing and people need a voice. Our streets are really, really bad, especially down south, I mean, down Commonwealth, Chapman, and Orange Door. And we need a voice. As a council member, my three main principles for Fullerton is to, is to city business, deal with city business so we can balance our budget, stay on top of our infrastructure, particularly in district five, and make sure that our residents have equal access to many wonderful services in Fullerton. We have many pressing problems in Fullerton and there are looming budget deficit and homeless problems which must be solved. We need to make sure that our water is safe and, but if we all work together, these problems can be solved. I promise. Thank you and don't forget to vote for me in district five.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for showing up. I appreciate it. I'm Johnny Ibarra.
Can you hear me now? I'm Johnny Ibarra. I'm running for South Fullerton's, South, the district five, South Fullerton. I'm addressing the long neglected needs, including streets, parks, and water. Streets, according to the OCTA 2017 analysis of 35 cities, Fullerton's roads are the worst in Orange County and the decades of neglect are worse than South Fullerton. We can do better than this. I want Fullerton first, not worse. Parks, we owe our kids more than dead grass and dirt to play on, yet this is exactly what we see at Woodcrest Park as the city's plan now languishes after six years of delays. There's actually more grass growing in Woodcrest Drive than in the park. That's that report there. Water, on April 13th, 2018, Fullerton received a citation from the California State Water Resources Control Board. Our municipal water had twice tested positive for coliform back in December. The report. Can't we do better than this? I'm a self-employed businessman, owner of Ibarra Real Estate at Lemon and Valencia for 34 years. I'm the only candidate who grew up speaking Spanish in a district where half the residents speak it as their first language. If elected, I will serve, I will listen, and I will lead. I ask for your vote and your support. Muchisimas gracias.
I need to do my own mic. The first question goes to Nicholas. Are you happy with the existing five districts or should they be expanded to seven? And the second question is, should we elect a mayor citywide? So, let me repeat that. And if at any time you want me to repeat it, I can. So, the first question is, are you happy with the existing five districts or should they be expanded to seven? And the second part is, should we elect a mayor citywide? And Nicholas, the first question's to you.
All right. Well, with regards to the district map in itself, I feel like it was drawn in a faulty manner due to gerrymandering and favoritism by existing city council members to get special interest to support their candidacy since it was not voter-approved. And that's one of the things that I definitely feel should be reestablished, especially when it comes to selecting the mayor of the city. The mayor is chosen by the city council members, not elected by the people. And I would definitely like to see a transition for an election for the mayor for the entire city of everyone in, in, living in the city.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you. Am I happy with the five districts or a seven district format? I don't know that one is necessarily better than the other. The idea of going to districts allows us to focus more on the neighborhood level. So, in theory, the more districts you have, the more you're focused on the neighborhoods. But I don't think there's too many people that are happy with the current form of the map that was approved. And one thing that is sure, or one thing that I do think has been a benefit is that candidates no longer have to raise $40,000 and $50,000 to run. You could actually run a credible campaign on $5,000 to $10,000, which I think is probably a good thing for this city. As far as a directly-elected mayor, I think if we're going to go to a directly-elected mayor, we need to reconsider whether or not the city is a charter city or a general law city, which it currently is. A directly-elected mayor, if it, if we don't change to a charter city, would have no more authority now than our appointed mayor. So, I don't see any specific direct benefit.
I like the district elections because they do offer neighborhood representation. You have a better rapport with your neighbors, you're better understanding of each street and the, and the issues. However, going to seven districts or a directly-elected mayor or not, I think at this stage, I'd like to focus on the real issues that we have in our city, which is our deficit, our roads, the rising poverty in South Fulton, our housing crisis. These are the main issues I think that I'd like to prioritize and focus on before we move on to something else. Thank you.
District five and all the districts are new to all of us and I'm so excited that we're going to have a voice down there. I think the five districts are sufficient and I think it's really important that all of us have a voice and we haven't in many, many years. So, yes, the five districts are perfect for right now. As for having an elected mayor, well, I think right now, we need to stick with what we have. Let's get these districts going. Let's get these cities working, these little districts working together and so that district five won't be neglected anymore. We have to work together. And district five has been neglected and I am fighting my heart out to make sure that they get a voice. Thank you.
I've been an entrepreneur for 34 years here in Fullerton and I've always made lemonade out of lemons. I started with very little money to get going. So, as far as the districts are concerned, I think it's, it's well-done. Obviously, if you do have more representatives, you would serve more people and you would have more representation. But as some of the candidates said, we need to concentrate on the core issues. And the core issues that can be handled by the council are roads, parks, water, and public safety. These are the items that we can take care of. This is what we have power to deal with. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I like the idea of districts, the five districts. I just didn't, don't really like the, the current five, which the prior council, before I was here, selected. They're kind of gerrymander and they got fingers coming everywhere and so on. So, I'd like to see more of a compact districts. But regardless of that, as, as, whether you're in a district or not, I still feel you have to represent the whole city. If I'm elected in district three, I'm not just going to focus on that district three. Our city isn't big enough, the funding, the funding isn't, isn't there to say, well, what about my district? But what I will continue to focus on is the Hunt Library. Again, we want to make sure, see if we can keep it open. West Coyote Hills, again, 62% of you voted to keep it open and I'm fighting for that. We secured $19.8 million. The Fox, great institutional venue. We want to keep that open. And then our Richmond Community Center, our Garnet, Garnet Community Center, and then our, our Hoya Scholars. We need to support those community centers so they can thrive and support our future. Thank you.
So, the next question is about police and Greg will start us off. I'm combining two questions. The first, to what extent should the police disciplinary records, including the chief's recent troubles, be kept secret or be public information? And to build on that, how would you institute public oversight of the Fullerton Police Department? So, let me read that again. To what extent should police disciplinary records, including the chief's recent troubles, be kept secret or be public information? And building on that, how would you institute public oversight of the Fullerton Police Department?
Great question. So, as far as specific disciplinary records, you know, the current problem we have is that employees are, their employment records are shielded from public view and it's not a council policy, this is state law. And I think if we want to see disciplinary records from police officers, you have to change state law, just that simple. As far as how to institute a public oversight, well, right now, there's five elected council members who serve as the, eventually, the final board to hear appeals from those who feel that they've been wrongly disciplined or wrongly terminated. I think that works. Obviously, we can't go into details on the specifics of a case because they are shielded, they are protected by those state laws. And it kind of comes back to whether or not we can change state law. As far as civilian oversight, there is a possibility of a civilian oversight board, but I see I'm out of time.
I think, just like Greg said, I echo that. I mean, if we, we ought to reform any of this, it has to start at the state level. The cities sometimes are pretty, their hands are pretty tied when it comes to following the, the rule of law. As far as an oversight committee, I think that, I'm, I was in the medical field and in, in medicine, there are some oversight committees and supervising what goes on in the hospitals. But these are professional boards that allow for people who understand these, these issues well. And I think this is where we need to make sure that if we do implement something like this, that there are professionals from, who are, who are aware of law enforcement, civil rights attorneys, et cetera, that may be able to be a part of this. Otherwise, it's just going to be an ad hoc thing and, and it opens up to, to error of judgment. So, thank you.
I do, I do believe we should have an oversight committee. What happened in, in South Fullerton, I live off of Lemon and I see a lot of injustice going on. I've even been pulled over and I'm asked why. I want to make sure that it is clear and transparent. Anytime an officer pulls a person over, everybody, it should be a record of it. When someone goes down there and makes a report, they should handle it. If they don't handle it, we need to have someone to oversee that. I know it's a state policy, but we have to make sure that our, our citizens are being well taken care of and we pay for them and they're, and we have been, it's been lacking down in South Fullerton. So, I would like to see a committee so that we have transparency with the police department.
Thank you.
Police and fire protection, I'm, I'm for increasing the department protection, but without increasing the budget. We need to find creative ways to improve our protection. But children should run to police, not away from them. Government is the servant, not the public master. An oversight committee, I think, would be a very good thing, but it needs to be looked at and observed. Thank you.
Yes, well, as has been said before, we, the five council, are the oversight committee. And I've been here in two years and I've been really careful to anything that comes up with the police officers or police situation, to really look into it and ask the questions. If that- If after something happens, if you all, all are not happy with what our police is doing, then at the voting polls, you can get rid of our current police oversight committee. And we, with that, currently, situation with the chief, we did hire a public investigator, we're waiting for that. We will take appropriate action. And, and as far as the state, yeah, there is some legislation that ties our hands to certain things, but I think we, the city, can still demand and, and look into it and request more of our police. Pay professionals, we're, and we should hold them accountable. So again, I am one of the oversight committee right now, so if you have a concern with our current police, feel free to talk to me. We will figure this out.
Well, I definitely am supportive of an oversight committee. I myself have been a victim of police abuse, and I, despite these claims, those abuses of authority have went overlooked. And I think there should be an oversight committee that should be truly independent, not be influenced or involved with any government official whatsoever. I also believe that with our current police chief, he's currently out on, out on leave right now, receiving thirty thousand dollars a month. That's some people's salary here. And he's getting that for a month while he's out on leave for his off-duty altercation. So I definitely believe that there needs to be some more accountability there, and we can't keep, what is it? We can't keep rewarding bad behavior. That's exactly what's happening with our police department right now, and which is why we don't have any accountability in law enforcement.
Thank you. The next question will start with Ahmad. Do you support Fullerton College's stadium proposal, or should the Hornets share the existing stadium at Fullerton High School?
Well, I always like to defer to, to, to the people, and we have to look at the neighborhoods and the impact. I like studies, I'd like to see the, any financial studies. What is the financial impact on our, on our city, whether it's positive or negative? We cannot just make judgments based on instincts or based on feelings. We have to make those based on objective studies, and then taking, making sure that we're communicating these studies with our neighborhoods and getting proper feedback from the neighborhoods that will be impacted the most. So, I can't say I'm going to be yes or no on this at this point, because there is no real studies that have been considered at this point.
Hi, I'm a Hornet for life, and I just want to say, whatever the community wants in that area, I would definitely stand by them. It's, I mean, I, I love being a Hornet, I love football, but if that community is going to be disrupted, and it's going to cause issues with traffic and parking in their neighborhoods, then there's going to be an issue, then I'm going to have to go with the people.
Here we go Hornets, here we go. Here we go Hornets, here we go. I'm not necessarily for a new stadium. I, I really love what they did to Fullerton High School Stadium. I think that the community has to answer that, those questions, whether they can tolerate another one or not. But we are having problems with the school boards and, and the community college district getting together so that they can use that facility. So that problem has to be addressed also. Thank you.
Up to this point, I had not swayed in one way or another. My, my thought was, you know, let the trustees, the trustees of the college district have the ultimate save. But since I live right next to the stadium, literally two blocks down, and I've been knocking on doors these last few weeks, in that area, the, the thing that I keep hearing is, are you going to develop Coyote Hills? A lot of people don't want that. And are you going to save the Hunt? And those, I could definitely say, yes, we were, you know, I started the AHA Committee to save the Hunt, so we're looking at that. West Coyote Hills, sixty-two percent of you, again, said no development. And the third thing that's come up is the stadium. And up to this point, I have been undecided, but after listening to the residents, and I've knocked on many doors there, and that's one of the biggest concern. At this point, I would say, we, we need to relook at that stadium, and look at using the, the JC, or look to using Cal State Fullerton, there's two stadiums there. But again, it's all on the residents in that area that I've knocked to, I've knocked on, and there's been a lot of them. Thank you.
Well, I definitely think that the decision should be left up to the people in, in that area and that community. If it boils down to a city council decision, I definitely would like to hear from them first before I would throw my support behind any development. But my question more so is, who is this new stadium going to be paid for by? Is it going to be paid for by taxpayers, or are we going to allow a private company to be able to develop that? Is it going to be sponsored by Verizon, or, you know, some other company? Because if they want to pay for it, then that's fine. And again, if the people in the community agree to it, then I wouldn't want to stand in the way from that.
So, I made a motion, and it was supported by this council, to issue two resolutions, one to the Fullerton High School Board, and one to Cal State Fullerton requesting that they work with the Fullerton College to be able to offer up their own stadiums that they already have for the college to use. And I know the high school district has been very willing to work with the, with the folks at the Fullerton College to allow them to use their stadium. And unfortunately, there just hasn't been any move to do that. So instead, Fullerton College buses them across town to Yorba Linda High for their games. And that just seems ridiculous. So, the neighbors have spoken loud and clear, they don't want the stadium there, they don't want the light, they don't want the noise, they don't want the traffic. And any day of the week, I'm going to go with those residents.
The next question will start with Vicki. There's two questions. One is a general question, where is high-density housing appropriate in Fullerton, and where is it not? And then specifically for District Five, District Five has seen a lot of high-density development. Would you limit this?
Well, everybody goes to Costco, and they see the new project going up next door on Harbor. And my neighbors are saying, the fifth floor, they can probably look down in my backyard. So that, they're worried about that, their kids. So, I don't know who said, or who okayed for that to go up. Our neighbors were not aware, and they're frustrated with that, as I go out and canvass. On Ash, Elm, Roslyn, who come out of that area to hit Harbor, they're going to have a hard time coming out because the traffic's going to be so, so busy out there, it's going to be hectic. So I just think the high density should not just be limited to District Five, it should be in all districts. Low-income homes have not been addressed, and they're all in District Five, behind the fire department, over off of Orange Door, ten, or it's going to go over off of Commonwealth. And then we have this one, this big one going up at Costco, which is going to cause major traffic. So that's an issue for me, and it's an issue for, it's an issue for District Five.
Well, that, that's a good, good question. We need housing, and we also don't want to impact our present citizens and, and neighbors, you know, they, they live here too. And constantly in District Five, because it's such a diverse district, having industrial, commercial, multi-residential, high-density, the homeless shelter, just so many variables in our district. And District Four, District Four is in the same position. It really has to be looked at. Every project has to be looked at and how it's impacted. Unfortunately, it's going to cost developers more, but that's what we have to do. And also the height, it really has to be looked at. Because I, I've heard so many complaints about the one that's across from Denny's on Harbor by Costco, that the height of those units is allowing people to look in their neighbors' backyards. So, we really have to look at what we're, we're going to do. And, like I said, once again, core issues, roads, parks, water, public safety.
Yes, again, I've worked in District Five and Four for about twenty-one years, so I understand the needs and what's going on over there. And even though it's not my district, I would feel very, very concerned that we are developing too much, too many housing, high-density housing in there. I do believe, I do know that we need housing, but it's got to be balanced, it's got to be well-done, and we got to include market rate, affordable housing at the different levels. The, the Red Oak Development that's going to go up here by Mahaly Chevrolet, that came to council when I was here, and I just thought that sixty units per acre was a little too much. And I was, I believe, the only council member who voted against that, because it was just too much, it was all market rate, there was no affordable housing, no, no, no ten, twenty percent market rate. And I think we have to look, if we're going to do high-density, we have to put it in areas where we're not going to impact the neighborhoods, perhaps along the railroad tracks, or the, the train station where we can have commuters coming in and out. But overall, we, we can't just say, well, one area is it. Thank you.
I think it's a bit counterintuitive for us to talk about wanting to deal with the issue of affordable housing, yet want to restrict high-density development, when really that's what it is, is creating homes to be rented out, not single-family homes. These are units that they're created to be rented out. And I don't feel like we should have any liberty over dictating what another person does with their property. However they want to develop, develop it, it should be their choice, especially if it's their land. It shouldn't be up to this council or anyone else for that matter, especially if, again, they're addressing a problem, which is our housing issue. So if they're solving the issue, then government needs to do its job and get out of the way.
You know, we have land use and zoning ordinances just to be able to plan these things so that we can do it in a measurable and metered, and thoughtful process, so that things don't happen sort of willy-nilly and sprouting up on their own. That said, we need to take, take account of the development units that are currently entitled and not yet built, and absorb that before we start doing even more. The infrastructure has not caught up to the level of development that's currently planned, and that needs to change. We need to have the infrastructure in place so that it supports the units that are already planned to be built. And that means make sure the roads work well, make sure the water's good and available, sewer lines are built for capacity. It's got to happen.
We, we have a housing crisis in California, and we do need housing. But how we implement this in our city needs to be balanced, and we need to have housing for every economic level. I live down by Orange Door and Harbor, and they built the Aspect Building. That starts at two thousand dollars for renting, and that area is heavily rental, all the way to Witchcryst and Richmond, including low-income housing that's tied to the fair market value. So by building that over there as rentals, we actually upped the fair market value and impacted people. So we have to be also mindful of that. So I'd like, I like the idea of, of fair market, but I'd also like to make sure that it's balanced with a full spectrum of housing types as well.
Thank you. The next question goes to Johnny to start. It's about college town. The proposed college town plan and Nutwood closure are on hold. If Cal State Fullerton and the city put it back before the city council, how do you feel about number one, closing Nutwood Avenue? And number two, allowing the college plan to have high-density development? So let me read it again. The proposed college town plan and Nutwood closure are on hold. If it comes back before the council, how do you feel about number one, closing Nutwood Avenue? And number two, allowing high-density development in that college town?
I've got those answers for you. But I want to acknowledge my beautiful wife over there, Nikki Ibarra. Could you please say hi to everybody? She never comes to any events that I have, so thank you very much for coming. Number one, I will not close Nutwood. If I am elected, Nutwood will not close. None of those streets will be closed. Number two, I will have to look at how many units are going to go in and see the impact reports, read them myself. I know that the kids need housing, and they want it to be not a commuter school, but a school that you, you actually live in, okay? But is everybody else ready for that? I, I don't know. We need to find out. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Sis.
Yes, so this is a, is a more of a hypothetical question, because I haven't heard that it's coming back. And if it does come back, I would like to see what impact, what the plans are, what impact's going to happen. As far as closing Nutwood, you know, right off the top of my head, I would say no. But if the community sees value in developing that area and cutting, closing off a street, I would definitely look at it. As far as high-density, again, how much is high-density? We'd have to look at the community, the surrounding area, and how many units. And again, balance. If we're going to change zoning to allow high-density, I want to make sure we get some affordable housing there. I want to combine it, I want a part of the blueprint. I don't want just market rate, because that drives a lot of people out. It's driven out three of my kids out of state because they can't afford housing. So that's very important, and I do want to see if we can do something balanced, reasonable, and, and smartly built.
Well, I live right off of Nutwood, so I definitely would not be supportive of that street being closed. I don't know if you guys have been on Nutwood around three to five, six o'clock? It's horrendous. I mean, the traffic there is unbearable. But with regards to a development of a college town in that area, think of that traffic that you see during that time getting even worse. So no, I would not support any development of any college town. It's not like USC or anything like that. We don't have this large area to expand the project. But with regards to supporting any development of housing, because the state does own the college, if they want to build more homes for the students, then that would be fine too. Again, we just need to be able to accommodate our students, since they do make up a vast majority of the population here, as well as the economy.
So to a large extent, Cal State Fullerton can really do whatever it wants. If it wants to build the additional student housing, it can certainly do that. However, when it comes to things like Nutwood, while the state can certainly come in and tell us what they would like to do with Nutwood, it's still a city road, and unless the state wants to take it over and then close it, which I would not support, it doesn't make sense. Why would you get rid of a road when you are already having traffic issues and then add to that more housing? The math doesn't add up, it's kind of a backwards thinking. I know the premise behind it was, well, if the students live there, then they don't need the cars, then you don't have as much traffic. Well, it's, it's nice pie in the sky, but we just don't see that as reality. And when that does, when that time does come and it becomes a reality, then maybe we can look at closing Nutwood.
Again, this is a hypothetical. We have students who are having housing problems, we've got students sleeping in their cars, so housing is an issue, and if Cal State needs housing and they want to build, then we have to somewhat accommodate in a balanced measure. As far as creating more traffic and closing roads, we have to look at the impact reports to find out what actually the impact is going to be. I do favor public transportation, and I think that that would be a, a move that we can accommodate, that I'd like to see, to relieve some of the traffic that could be, that we are having problems with right now in, in that part of town. So, again, I'd have to look at the studies and the plans, and designers always, and architects have all kinds of plans, and we'll wait and see if that ever comes back up. Thank you.
Hi, I think college town should be down at Kimberly Clark. We got transits going down there, and we won't impact the neighborhood, and then we'll bring in revenues down there. State College is congested all the time. So if we put it over there, that would help with the, with all the traffic, and also, it would give them an area to have their college town. So I would just move it on down, and there's access to the, there's access to transit to get there quickly from the school, and I, we wouldn't have to close down Nutwood. to get there quickly from the school, and I, we wouldn't have to close down Nutwood.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Jesus. A question about youth getting involved. The city of Anaheim recently established a youth commission. What would you do to give the youth of Fullerton more of a voice? And how would you get them more involved?
Well, um, I, I have requested, and we're working with Cal State Fullerton to create a youth commission, so we're in the process of doing that, because I do think that, listening to our, hearing our youth, uh, it's very important. Again, I've been teaching at junior high, and, uh, uh, when we do get into a topic of, uh, community issues and so forth, it's, it's really amazing how the kids, even though they're seventh and eighth graders, they really get into it, and they're passionate about it. So I would gladly support it, and we are working with it, we're working with Cal State Fullerton. And, and another thing that, that I've, I've done to get, uh, youth involved is we, we've started, uh, uh, speech and debate team at Nicholas Junior High, and that allows them to go out there, speak publicly, and, and it remove that fear. And, uh, we've also given internships out. Uh, my, uh, my wife, the assembly member, has, uh, always taken any high school kid or junior high school kid who wants to be involved. Uh, we've, we've done internships with them. So, uh, but we are working on a youth commission, and it should be coming by the, the start, the beginning, by the start of next, uh, year, 2019.
Well, um, what I learned on the campaign trail running for governor, speaking to our youth, is they're a lot smarter than we think. Um, it doesn't matter their age, whether they be seven years old or seventeen years old. We have a lot to learn from our children, and I really do, would be in support of a development of a youth commission. My wife, she actually works as a preschool teacher. I'm pretty sure she would love to have an opportunity to work with more kids, and, um, just give them an opportunity to be heard, just like every other resident in our city. We can't neglect them, or think that any information that they have to share with us isn't valuable simply because of their age.
I've been, uh, working with, um, the Hugh Bryant Youth Organization and scouting in our local schools for a number of years, and, um, early on, uh, in my, um, first term on this council, I was working with, um, high school students from Yorba Linda, Troy, Fullerton, Sunny Hills, um, even as, uh, far over as Oxford Academy. Just kids that were interested in how, uh, local government works, and they wanted to find out, you know, more about it. They wanted to have a say. And, um, through that interaction, I was able to introduce them to other local elected leaders, and, uh, put them in touch with state assembly members, members of Congress, and then, uh, all the local, um, city council and school board members. And it was very eye-opening for them, as well as for me. And so I continue this today. I try to encourage, um, high school interns here at City Hall, and the city has been very good about hiring them, uh, when they do apply and they do show interest. In fact, sometimes they, they show, uh, a little bit more initiative than some of the college interns, so step it up, college grads.
Yeah, um, I too favor a, uh, youth commission. Um, I think this is a great opportunity for young folks to voice their opinions and provide input to our, uh, city. Uh, but I also would like to make sure that we, as a city, as the education city, are providing enough coordination and collaboration with our school districts, our, uh, our Cal State, and with our Fullerton College, to provide opportunities, uh, and to provide also local, uh, jobs. We need to make sure that we're providing, uh, a good, solid local economy for our youth to actually have opportunities locally here as well. So, uh, it is not just about a youth commission where, uh, but it's about how do we make this youth commission and, uh, youth engagement effective, uh, so that we can, uh, change policies to help them, and make sure that our education is, uh, a top priority for, and our, uh, workforce is a top priority as well. Thank you.
Yes, I'm in favor of youth commission. Um, I've worked at the city from the library to, um, Independence Park, over at Maple School, and this would just be an opportunity for the kids to really get involved in civic engagement. I think it's very important that they can help be a part of just keeping kids safe and bullying. I mean, a lot of things go along with working with, um, youth. So I really do favor the Commission for Youth, and I'm looking forward to be on the city council and helping with that. Thank you.
I, I like what, um, Mr. Zara had to say, and I liked what Mrs. Calhoun, or Dr. Calhoun had to say about that. Um, first, we gotta get them to make their beds, um, you know, every morning. Believe it or not, organization to the start of the day is really very important. Um, and I believe that we have to concentrate a youth commission, especially in the impoverished areas, okay? The, the wealthy do a good job of taking care of their kids and pushing them along. We need to help those impoverished areas by providing the, the right, um, tools and facilities for them. Thank you.
So the next question goes to Nicholas. How would you find a way to recruit new businesses for our town?
That's easy, less taxes. Less taxes, less regulation, less control over how they operate their business. The one thing that they do is they draw in revenue for the city, much-needed revenue. So if anything, I believe that we need to reduce the amount of restrictive, um, policies that we have in place right now that prevent the development of certain particular type of businesses, such as, um, medicinal marijuana dispensaries. I know there's a frown on that somewhere, but, um, our state has now made that recreational. So while cities like Santa Ana are reaping the benefits from that, our city continues to suffer. The residents from here go to cities such as there, they buy their product, and then they come back here and they do whatever they choose to do with it. So we shouldn't prevent adults from being able to choose to do whatever they wanna do with their own body.
So the idea of recruiting new businesses, um, you know, I think the council's role is to make sure that you have sound policies in place that do support new businesses coming, and more importantly, retain the businesses that are here. Um, you know, a good example of that is, uh, a company like Kimberly-Clark pulling up, uh, and deciding that they're gonna leave town. That's a significant number of jobs that are, um, leaving, but we can look at this a couple of ways. One, is there any way to keep them here? And they've made it clear that there is not. There's a, uh, business decisions much bigger than the local, um, regional issues that they have that is causing them to do this. So we have to look at, alright, so how can we repurpose this? Now, city doesn't own it, but we certainly have control over zoning, so we wanna make sure it, uh, stays in a, um, zone for commercial, for industrial, for manufacturing, something that's gonna bring jobs to Cal-, uh, to, not just California, but to Fullerton. And, uh, we wanna continue to foster that, and that means we have to have the policies in place, and we have to be supportive of that up here at the dais.
So, I think that is the key issue for us. If we ought to solve our deficit, we need to bring, uh, business into our city. We need to make sure that we're generating revenue enough, so we can finally fix our roads, um, and invest, and reinvest in, in some of the other services the city provides. We have to be a, a friendly, a business-friendly city. Uh, we need to streamline, uh, the process of opening a business here. We need to make sure that we are talking and engaging, uh, uh, businesses, and especially emerging, uh, businesses, uh, and industries, to bring them back into our industrial section and create some jobs. Uh, there's, uh, green energy industries that are, uh, and biotech that we can tap into. Also, I wanna make sure that we're focusing beyond, on, for small business, beyond our bar scene in the downtown, and look at other areas that we can improve, like South Fulton, the cor- the Orange Thorpe corridor, and attract more businesses there, and, and improve the, uh, the area, so customers actually can come in and, uh, look at, and, and buy from the businesses that already exist. So that's, uh, what I would be focused on. Thank you.
Oh, hi. Um, bringing new businesses here. Well, I would definitely court, uh, education and technology, like Apple, Amazon, uh, Microsoft, um, Google. I have a friend who was the mayor of San Jose, and they have a billion-dollar, he was in my doctorate program, billion-dollar budget, and I know we don't have about a two-hundred-million-dollar budget, but I think we have the workforce. I think, I know we have the workforce. We have a Cal State Fullerton, and we have Fullerton College. And so if we bring in more technology here, I think we would do well, and we would bring in more money and more revenue, so we can actually tackle the five-point-one-million-dollar deficit. Thank you.
How do we attract more businesses? Uh, first, we need, uh, a business liaison expert, or perhaps the city council people can act in that capacity. I don't wanna increase any more budget. Um, we need to improve, repair, innovate our infrastructure to attract new businesses. I don't want any new tax incentives. Uh, those are not necessary. Um, and like Dr. Calhoun said, we need to attract the big guys, and we need to, to figure out how we can do that. We have the city that can do that. We, we were so viable in the seventies. You know, we had Hunts, we, we, we had Hughes, we, we have, uh, you know, there's no reason that, um, the big paper companies should've left us. Um, so we really need to re-examine and innovate. Thank you.
Well, um, I think one way we, we need to attract new businesses is by making sure our industrial, commercial, uh, zoning stays that. We, we've gotten in the habit, or there's been instances where we've changed, uh, some of that zoning to, to, to residential, or we've, uh, 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 churches have moved into these industrial places, and so that removes it from the industrial, the, the manufacturing process. But I, I have been working with, with our, uh, city manager to, to create a position, or get someone to be here, in essence, our Economic Development Director, 'cause we need someone to go out there and hustle and, and speak of our city, and say, hey, there's a piece of property here or there, and take the initiative, and making sure we do that. And I think also with our current change in the Community Development Department, uh, new director, new, new inspectors, I think we will, we will begin to make it easier, uh, for businesses, for, for permits, whether it be a new business or construction permits. I know there's been issues there, but, uh, we're making an effort, and, uh, that's one of my, my goals, is to making sure our second floor up here, when we could get a permit or a license, that it becomes easier.
The next question, we'll start with Greg. Have you accepted any? The next question, we'll start with Greg. Have you accepted any campaign contributions from developers?
Yes.
Ammon?
No.
No.
No, I haven't.
Jesus?
Trying to think, uh, I don't think I have, but I'll have to look at my, uh, my records. I, I've accepted, uh, contributions from a person who has a few businesses, and I'm trying to think if he's a developer or not. But I think not.
Well, between my two opponents, um, who have about fifty thousand dollars to spend between the two of them, I have none, zero. I'm not accepting any campaign donations. The job itself only pays seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so if you're gonna spend thirty thousand dollars to get a job that pays seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, then that's a serious, um, red flag on spending.
The next question will, uh, start with Ammon. Name three things to consider to cut the budget or generate revenue to balance the budget. Let me repeat that. Name three things to consider to cut the budget or generate revenue to balance the budget.
Well, um, I think we've reached our limit in cuts, to be honest. I mean, what more are we gonna be cutting from? We are already short-staffed in our public safety. Uh, they're having a hard time recruiting, so we're encroaching in our public safety now. Um, our community center fees have gone up and tripled in price, outpricing the neighborhoods, after-school programs have gone up, uh, our taxi, uh, voucher program for our seniors have been limited to only using it to the community center and back. I'm not sure what else to cut. I mean, what can we do? I'd like to focus on, um, economic development. The first thing I'd like to do is make sure that we are, uh, streamlining business operations, uh, that we are actively seeking, um, uh, a replacement for Kimberly-Clark in that industrial zone, and making sure that we're looking seriously at improving South Fulton's business area to attract more businesses. Thank you.
It's a complex issue. We have a hundred-and-ninety-four million dollars, and we used to have a lot more when we had redevelopment. I don't know where else, like, uh, Monta said, I don't know where else we could cut. So basically, we need to bring in some technology here. We need jobs. We need revenue. So that's an issue for our city, and, and Fullerton, um, District Five has brought in the majority of the funding for this city. I know in one, two, three, and four, there has been taxes for the homes, but we, downtown brings in a lot of money, and that's part of our district. We've brought in money for tax revenues down at all the stores, so we definitely need to spread it out and bring in more businesses, because we are, we are in a deficit, and we have to cut. We can't cut anymore. We just need to bring in more money. That's the bottom line. Thank you.
I don't think we need to have any more money, okay? The two-hundred-million dollars we have has been enough in the past. Um, we need to cut, um, um, some of our budget. We need to find, uh, the poor producers and, you know, figure out how we're gonna circumvent that. Two-hundred-million dollars, um, Garden Grove, Staten, Buena Park, Placentia, they're all the same-sized cities as we are, and they do it. They have better infrastructure than we do. Look at their streets, drive their streets. I'm a real estate broker, I see everything in Orange County.
Yeah, um, so prior to getting to council, I, I, I was all excited about where can we cut the fat and so forth, but once I got up here and saw the numbers and the budget, uh, we are at a point where any more cuts will really impact our, our, our services, uh, to the community. We're, we're understaffed, uh, that we have a lot of, uh, job openings who are, remain unfilled. So the way I would do is, I, I would make sure that, um, we're ready for Kimberly-Clark. That, that place is gonna be vacant in three, four years. We need to get, take the initiative and start recruiting, start working with, with their owners, hey, what can we bring here? We need to make sure we, we develop the, the Fullerton Transportation Center. Uh, prior, there was plans for a hotel and other things, yeah, so we need to look at that, 'cause that'll bring in more small businesses, more revenue, and the Fox Block. We gotta move on with that, to see how that can generate more activity and, and so forth. So, um, and currently, we have, um, uh, you know, we, we, there's some other open land that we need to go out there and say, what's the best possible use within the community that's well-balanced? So I would bring in definitely more businesses.
Well, the one thing I would like to say is we're being serious misled on where our money is going, so I strongly advocate a, um, independent audit of the city's finances, so we actually know how much money that we have. But with regards to the budget itself, really, we just have a mismanagement of public funds. I mean, we have forty-five million dollars in unused funds. I heard, uh, one of the statements about there being a, a, a cut to law enforcement. We have twenty-one fire chiefs that get paid nearly three-hundred-thousand dollars a year. That's nearly seven million dollars on just twenty-one people alone. So we can make some cuts, and it's gonna start first with city official salaries, where it should start and end. Um, also, with regards to the pension, I believe there needs to be a pension risk transfer to a company such as Prudential, who just picked up a nearly two-billion-dollar deal from a company back east. So there's ways that we can cut the amount of money that's being spent here in the city.
Could you repeat the, uh, question, please?
Name three things to consider to cut the budget or generate revenue to balance the budget.
Well, I think the, um, obvious one is, is, uh, business development. You have to attract those new businesses and, uh, keep the revenue coming. Um, and, and as businesses change hands, uh, properties that were stale on the tax roll are revitalized, new permits issued, and they go back on the tax roll at a much higher value, so that does stimulate, uh, revenue in the city. Uh, another area, as was also previously mentioned, that we need to look at is, uh, reformulate the pension structure. Uh, it's just not sustainable. Um, this year, we're paying out four million dollars more than we were three years ago. Uh, that's because of CalPERS, uh, actuaries and the calculation on the rate of return. And, um, as long as they're, uh, mismanaging how they invest the money and their rate of return is as poor as it is, we're gonna continue to have to pay, um, uh, more from the general fund to backfill that, and therein lies the, uh, giant gaping hole we're dealing with of a, of a deficit.
The next question, we'll start with Vicki, and it's a question about roads. Given the budget deficit people talked about, how can you find more money to repair roads?
Well, you know, in District 5, we've had the, we've had the book of the, we've had the worst roads down Orange Storm, Yale, Stanford. I mean, kids are falling on their bikes, skateboarders are tearing up their knees. It's awful. So as I did my research, I found that you can use funding from the supervisor, they can bring in some money, as well as the Assemblywoman. So since I have a relationship with a couple people, I would ask them to help us fund those streets, because they've been neglected for at least 10, 15 years, or even more. So that's what I would do. I would work with the supervisor and the Assemblywoman, as well as our Fullerton District Works to get it done.
Johnny?
The simple way would be, let's get Domino's Pizza to go ahead and fill our potholes for us, you know, since our city isn't doing a good enough job of managing the budget so that there's extra money, so that we can have these infrastructure needs taken care of. I mean, let's look at that. That's where we have to be. Thank you.
Yes, so that was one of my, when I ran in '16, that was one of the things I said, I'm going to look for the money that's hidden there and so forth to fix the roads, and we are tied in. One of the ways that we can fix the roads is if the California Electric votes to keep the SB 1 funding, because that'll bring in, what was it, $3, $4 million a year to fix that. But on our own, we just have to be creative, and I know we're in the process of selling additional surplus assets that we have, and that we've tied it directly to fixing our infrastructure, and so we'll keep doing that. And then I also asked for a study session to ask the public, what do you think? What do you all think we should do to be able to fix the roads? Because it's a complex question, and it's going to require a lot of input. It's not an easy answer. So we have requested, I have requested that, and probably at the beginning of 2019, we'll have a study session where we'll get input from you guys and your best ideas to manage our roads.
All right. Well, I guess Johnny must have been taking notes to me on the campaign trail. I've actually been speaking about the Domino's Paving for Pizza project for quite some time. It's the most economic way for us to have our roads actually paved without it costing a dime. You can Google it. They have a project called Paving for Pizza. They will fix your potholes, they will fix your roads, all in replacement of just slapping down a Domino's logo. So I wouldn't mind driving over a Domino's logo, and I'm pretty sure the majority of people here wouldn't if it would result in them not having to pay to have that road fixed. Also, I believe that public transportation and commercial drivers should also pay towards fixing our roads. They use our roads just as much as the public does, so let the companies pay to fix our roads also. I believe also we should be ending project labor agreements that only allow unions to bid on government contracts. There's tons of independent contractors that would love to get called in to fix that pothole. We need to just make that more accessible.
So there's a couple of things we need to look at. One is the use of one-time funds. That would be from, such as a sale of surplus property. And where does that money go? I've been a strong advocate that that money goes into rebuilding infrastructure, specifically the roads. Roads are really expensive, and once you get them built, they're not that expensive to maintain. But it's easy to defer the maintenance for 30 years, and then you have to rebuild the entire road. And that's where we're at now. So one-time funds for road rebuild, and the other problem you run into is gas tax money, specifically through Measure M2. It does not, you can't rebuild a road with gas tax money. The credits for how much money you get is more on maintenance, so if it's a maintenance project, you get more money. If it's a rebuild, you actually get less money. So you get penalized for roads you have to rebuild. So we have to come up with that money somehow. I think the one-time funds is it. And then also, there are several grants available. We do need to take advantage of those.
Thank you.
So the issue with our roads is a symptom of our economic problem in the city, which is our deficit. So we have to tackle the deficit in order to fix our roads. It is as simple as that. And so we can sit and talk about all kinds of novel ideas of how to fix our potholes, but the reality is that we need to generate revenue for our city. And that's where the root of the problem is. We have, I'd like to see some short-term solutions of reviewing our street selection process, because there is a perception that South Fulton doesn't get enough road repairs compared to North Fullerton. For sure, our residuals don't, are always sort of the end of the list, so, I mean, our street hasn't been paved in 40 years, our alleyways are rubble. So I'd like to start looking at ways of how we actually select our streets and see if there's a fair way of doing that. But it is a long-term solution. We need to generate revenue through good economic development policies and good business policies that generate revenue, and then prioritize that for our streets.
Thank you. So I have lots of questions that I wish I could get to. We are going to do closing statements. If you're looking for inspiration, there are a couple of questions you might want to consider. What makes Fullerton special, and how will you maintain this? What is your number-one priority for your district? And what makes you uniquely qualified to be on the council? And we'll start with Johnny for closing statements.
I believe that I'm the most qualified, because I am the most business-experienced candidate. Also, I've been here for 54 years. I lived at 442 West Roberta as a child till about 27 years old, then purchased my corner on Corner of Valencia and Lemon, and lived there for 34 years, and also have run a real estate office from there. I know every nook and cranny of Fullerton. I know the history of Fullerton. You would do real well by having me as your city councilman for District 5. Thank you.
Well, thank you again, League of Women Voters. And again, I want to emphasize that what I'm up to is making sure that our whole city's represented, and not just District 3. Yes, I'm running for District 3, and I will represent that, but I also will represent the whole city as a whole. We're not big enough, and our budget is not big enough to say, I just want this for my district. I don't think it's feasible. And I will continue to advocate for, again, for the hunt, because that's what I've heard out of knocking on doors. I will continue to advocate to get the, to get grant and funding for West Coyote Hills. We've been able to secure, with the help of the Assemblywoman, $19.8 million to purchase or maybe open up Coyote Hills. And again, the Fox, I know that's a very unique place, and I want to see if we can secure those funds and open that up. And infrastructure, that is the other thing that's really, that I heard when I knocked on your door. And we will continue to find ways, one-time funding, grants. And I want to hear from you guys, when we have that study session, what direction do we go with our roads? Because that is the number-one thing.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for having me, as well as to each and every one of you for sacrificing a few hours out of your evening to be here. I gave up dinner tonight, so some of you probably did also, so I appreciate you, and thank you for all of your support in advance. I've been a resident of Fullerton and would like to continue to. And the one thing that you've heard consistently up from the candidates here is that we would like to change the city. Now, if it changes for the better, or changes for the worse, is up to you. And that's for you as a voter to choose to decide on which candidates that you feel like will make the city better as you would like for it to be. I definitely will be supporting budget cuts over tax increases, and will do everything in my power to help the homeless by building single-family homes. They have 3D-printed homes that can be built in less than 48 hours under $5,000. We can get it done. I would also like to help small businesses and do everything as I can as city council member to help every resident. Thank you.
Thank you again. I'm grateful for this opportunity to continue to serve the Fullerton voters. Over the past six years, I've worked to implement significant, meaningful changes, like implementing body cameras for officers, consolidation of the fire command staff, and saving nearly $1.5 million for the cities of Fullerton and Abraha. Completion of three-grade separation projects, one of the largest capital improvement program investments in recent decades, consolidation of overly bureaucratic committees and commissions, significant renovations to our parks, and enhanced vision and focus on the quality of life in our neighborhoods. I bring to the dais my background as an adjunct professor of Geomatics Engineering, leadership skills as the OCSD Board Chair, and former mayor of Fullerton. I seek to bring back, once again, the Fullerton Founders Day Parade and Street Fair and other events that bring neighborhoods together, sponsored by private industry, and bringing our neighbors out to enjoy what Fullerton's all about. I'm excited as to what the future holds for Fullerton, and I look forward to continuing my leadership, seeking transparency in our government and responsiveness to your needs. Thank you.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for this opportunity. This is not an election about who's lived longest. This is about who's experienced the areas that they've lived in. I've been both a renter and both a homeowner, and my homeowner, it's a one-bedroom condo. Tried to buy a two-bedroom, couldn't afford it. My experiences have been similar to everybody else in my neighborhood. I've seen my neighbors, who are seniors and disabled, walking on, in our rubble streets, having a hard time. I've seen kids digging dumpsters for plastic bottles. Families are struggling in South Fulton, and we are only strong by the weakest, by our weakest link. And right now, South Fulton is a weak link. And if we are to strengthen our city and move forward, we need to uplift every corner of our city, and that's what I intend to do. Thank you.
This isn't about, you're right, who's lived the longest, or I have. This is about the residents. The residents have, voices have not been heard. I've been there all of my life, and I vow, and I will, go and fight for everything I can for them. It has been neglected, and it's not right. I am tired of going down Orange Storm and having to get my tires rotated every 30 days. It's just awful. I'm going to fight for these, I'm going to fight like no other. I am Fullertonian, Vicki Calhoun. I am an education, I come from this educational city. I've gotten my doctorate. I have gone and I have fought because of what I've gotten from this city. This city has been good to me, and I'm going to fight for those residents down in 5. I don't know what he's talking about, about digging in dumpsters? Because my Latino community and my African-American community, we share, and we work together. And that's exactly what we're going to do down in 5, under my leadership. And thank you so much for coming out, and thank you, League of Women. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So thank you to everyone. I want to give a huge thank you to the candidates for being here, for our volunteers from the League of Women Voters, our question sorters, and our timekeepers. If you can join me in thanking everyone for this evening. Thank you. Just a quick reminder about video. The video of this event will be available on the website. If anybody from the audience has taped, you need to show the questions in the entirety, make sure that nothing is altered or taken out of context. So thank you very much.